Cell phones off or muted, please. Time being six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanda?
Here.
Dan? Sherry?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Joe.
Here, and Dan, I believe, is on by phone.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm on Zoom.
Okay, four in present. At this time, would anybody care to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Have none. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
We will roll the agenda.
Second.
And further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item four at this time would be the time for public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a general public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Move on to item five, welfare quarterly reports. Troy, come on forward, please.
All right, April through June of this year, food pantry has seen a gradual increase over the last several months. We had one hundred fourteen in April, one forty in May, and one hundred ninety-one visits in June feeding about, it was four hundred forty-five visits, about thirteen hundred thirty-five people. Seventy-three new clients or individuals in this quarter. Seventy-one households sought emergency services other than the food pantry. And our increases in different services are kind of all over the place. The gas and oil hasn't, gas, it should be not oil, but gas has increased quite a bit. We have a lot of people coming in requesting gas just to get to work versus we usually give it for medical appointments out of town. But we've been trying to help people, you know, get to work or just make it through the week, which has increased quite a bit. Infant needs has increased quite a bit, the formula diapers. Lodging has made a pretty big increase. And of course, food, we've had a lot of people coming in for food. Lot of return visits and our food costs, you know, as with everybody, has increased quite a bit. A quarterly money spent was thirty-eight thousand versus last quarter was twenty-seven. So we're seeing the increase in in food and gas, just like everybody else is. Keeping up, maintaining the best we can. Other than that, we're working on a strategic plan for the contact center with the human resources person out of Texas. So we're in the process of that beefing up our board, changing the duties and the inclusion of the board. So we've got some things going, but other than that, we're we're seeing the pinch of the, you know, the inflation and then gas stuff, just like everybody else is.
Troy.
Go ahead, Don.
Troy, would you go to the top of your report to the food pantry and just explain to the public and me? April, one hundred and fourteen visits, feeding three hundred and forty-two individuals and their four returns?
Yeah, those people that come more than once in the month. So like if they they came in the first part of April, usually our the protocol is you can, we try to limit to once a month unless you need it, obviously. So we have people that return. Usually a lot of people don't return, but we had four returns in April. So that means people who were maybe there April second came again April fifteenth or whatever, for more food.
That's a pretty successful figure, isn't it?
As far as the returns?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a lot higher. But like in June, we had twelve returned, but we also had one hundred ninety-one visits. So what we're, but as a rule, people don't come more than they, you know, really should, but we don't discourage either people. I tell people if they run out of food in two weeks, come back and we'll feed them. We're not gonna turn anybody away. So.
Are these all Yankton County people?
Yeah, Yankton County, and we will, we help people in Nebraska cross a bridge because we do get some donations from like churches and schools and stuff in Nebraska. So basically, anybody that shows up, if they're even out from Yankton, they're out of town, they're passing through, we'll help them. We just, we don't turn anybody away, but we don't have a lot of people coming from other counties. So, but we're not gonna turn anybody away if they need food.
Troy, this is Dan Clemish. How you doing tonight? So do you, with the way the economy's going, I mean, you foresee continuing rising visits. I mean, if you look from April to June, I mean, you've almost doubled the individuals visiting and the individuals you're feeding. And do you expect that trend to continue?
Yeah, I expect that to continue as the food prices remain high. I think it's going, I think in July, it's already looking like it's gonna be up there again in June, like, or maybe more. We're just seeing people, we're seeing people that we've never seen before. We have people coming in that have never been to the food pantry that didn't even know where it was at.
Yeah. And for the board, you know, I've come down, I know I should visit more often, but I think you do a great job, you and your staff, at really helping people in need get by, you know, it's a, it's a handoff, but not necessarily a handout. And the food and the, the things that you and your team do really prevent people from getting in a lot worse shape. So this is really a bridge to get them by.
Right, yeah. Yep, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to prevent people from getting too far behind with rent, utilities, gas, meds, or whatever. But yeah, the costs are going up, just like they are for anybody else. So we're seeing.
You guys are also, is it social security payees? Correct, for a number of individuals that that wouldn't, they wouldn't have that assistance if you guys weren't.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we, we're payees for about, it fluctuates between seventy-five and ninety people that are, a lot of, most of them are assigned by the Social Security Administration. They ask us to be payees for people that have, get disability, social, SSI, SSDI, to make sure their money's handled correctly and they don't get in any trouble.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't need all the details now, but the strategic, the strategic plan. Where are you at in the process and is there, do you think you have an end date yet?
Yeah, it's, it should be, Alice Deninger is the one kind of spearheading it. She is putting together all information. We've had the meeting. The, we've had two meetings with various people around town, some of the other service providers. Then we had our official meeting several weeks ago at the United Way. And she is putting it all together. And right now, we just have some graphs, but I expect it to be probably finished within a month, maybe.
Good.
This month, maybe into August.
Sure.
Yeah, so I mean, it's something that the contact center's never really had. And so this kind of gives us a vision and some things to shoot for, some things to watch out for, some safeguards.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the report.
Move to approve the report.
Second or third, actually.
Go go Bruce.
Sherry.
I guess I didn't, I shouldn't have said I moved to, I guess. Sorry.
Sherry, Don second.
There you go.
Okay.
Sorry, Don.
I thought you were just used to being chairman.
Yes. Through.
Okay, motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item six. Right on time, okay.
Fire nice.
Approve new malt beverage license for fire nice. Come on forward, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Dan Clemish on the screen. I represent, my name is John Heber, I have a law firm, represent Fire Nice LLC. And this evening, we're asking for approval of the malt beverage license. If there's any questions, let me know.
What was your last name?
Heber, H E B E R.
I'm old, so you have to speak up.
Will do.
So I assume that Fire and Ice is putting up that nice, long building out across from Stringer's?
Correct.
And does it have bathroom facilities?
Yes, it does, and it will.
Okay. Have a subject tank?
Yes.
Any other questions regarding that patient? Not to entertain a motion.
Oh.
Oops, sorry, yep, yep, yep. Anybody in the audience care to make comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision.
Move to approve the application. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sid Logic.
First, I have on the agenda for application for Johnson Bridge PE grant. Last year, back in August, with we, August first is when the applications, we applied for, for Fleegs preliminary engineering grant, and we were awarded that. It is still in the process. It's not quite complete yet. Application date, again, this year for preliminary engineering grants is August first again. So I guess we're gonna apply for, for Johnson, Johnson Bridge, as long as you guys approve it. Total amount for the project would be one hundred and eighteen thousand. Local match would be twenty-three, six twenty-four out of the county's pocket. That includes survey hydraulics and then also rehab feasibility study. Just to see what, if it's feasible to rebuild it or
drop and replace.
Right.
They know when they'll be done with Old Fifty PE?
Wait, as of right now, from what I'm being told, is we're waiting on the state for a TSNL meeting. They'll, they'll meet us at Fleegs Bridge. Discuss type, size, and location. It's a location, that means it could get shifted east or west.
TSNL type, size, and length?
Location.
Location.
It might get shifted east or west.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay. So do they need a motion? We need a motion.
We'll need a motion to approve the PE grant application.
I would move to approve the 2023 application for a bridge improvement grant.
I'll second that, Clemish.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have approved microsurfacing bid. We have Clay County's bid that they put out this year for microsurfacing in their county. I'm just gonna kind of piggyback off that one. We are, well, we're microsurfacing the west or the east county line with Clay County. And then also when they're here doing that, as we discussed here, end of May, some, May or beginning of June, I don't remember, but we're going to do the three miles south of Valen and then like two is approximately two and a half miles of Old Fifty, the east end of Old Fifty.
That'll finish off that.
That'll finish off.
Corner of the county.
Right.
So when I looked through this, and I was just curious, there's a, there's a total, but I didn't see how many miles that covered.
Right.
Did I miss it?
Yes, I did not. I failed to get that in the packet. I have that information.
Okay.
I can forward that to all you guys.
Yeah, what's the cost per mile is what I was looking for.
I, that's, I was flipping through it because I knew that was gonna get answered or asked, and I, yeah.
Okay.
If I remember right, it was roughly that fifty to fifty-five thousand a mile.
And that included the striping and everything.
Right, yeah. Striping, also to have engineers whole tag engineering firm oversee the project.
Okay.
Okay, so I will, I will, I can forward that to all you guys in the morning.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, but I remember discussing the figure right around there. We talked about it, so.
So I would move to approve the Clay County microsurfacing bid.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next on the agenda, I have sixty-eight oh three oh one eight Stone Church Bridge approval to go to bid. We're looking at letting it for bid. This could, hopefully, beginning of August, so. Hopefully, we can get it out. The sooner the better, so we can possibly start this winter yet.
Be nice.
Move approval to go to bid for sixty-eight dash zero three zero dash zero one eight, known as Stone Church Bridge.
Both in the box, sorry, Dan. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just a couple updates. East Side Drive, we completed the paving on that. We're not done with the shoulders or the in slopes of the ditch. Asphalt's kind of tender now, so what, we'll move on to some other projects.
I've gotten, drove that, it turned out very nice. I've gotten some positive comments on that, too. Mike's a nice job, especially the, the rail crossing turned out nice, so.
I was, that was one of my biggest fears was the railroad crossing because, well, we can't lift the tracks, so. Ended up borrowing a profile, a pro, they call it a profiler, just a little mill that goes on the skid loader and we ground some out. But it did, I was impressed with how that turned out. And then Bridge on four four eight, we opened that here last week. That is asphalt road. We did a grade raise on the bridge. We raised the north end two feet, the south end, two and a half feet, since it was on kind of a hillside. We might pave it this fall. We'll see. Since we did such a raise on it, I would like to almost let it sit over winter. That way, we can get some settle out of it before we pave it. The bridge on Midway Road, two ninety-four street. They hollowed in, finished that up. We still have grading to do on that, but we still have to wait for a twenty-eight day break test on the concrete testing, so. That has to reach forty-five hundred PSI before we can put traffic on it. Then also, Scotten Road, last week tore into that. That bridge is being removed and replaced with a concrete box. And then the rest of the crew, we have patching, getting ready for chip seal. And then August first, it sounds like Loise is gonna move in to do the profile mill on Walsh Town Road. And while that is getting profilemilled, we will be closing stretches of that road.
It's right around the corner.
It's coming up.
August first.
Forty-six will be closed Thursday night, this week.
Yeah. And there is a meeting in Irene Wednesday night.
Tomorrow night, yes.
Tomorrow night at six PM about that project update.
Mike, this is Commissioner Clemish. You also got a grant for the new gravel truck, did you not? Ninety-four thousand?
Yep, we did.
It's good news.
We did get our, our grant awarded for, for a new truck, so as soon as I receive the, the awarded papers with signature from, from them up in Pierre, I can go talk to Ice State and we can get a truck ordered, so.
Bond Home got two or three?
Three.
Yeah, our little area got quite a bit of the funding this time. It was nice to see that.
So I'm almost half tempted next year to do the same thing and, which would pay for in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you, Mike. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, item eight, Mr. Hawkins, ambulance quarter report and fees.
Evening.
Doing well?
Good, good.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing that I really want to kind of point out, I guess, and then I'll ask questions, is our call volume last month. It was, we did three hundred and twenty-two total call, two hundred and twenty-three total calls for service last month, which is a banner record. And Troy had about ten supervisor callouts as well. So it's been kind of a, was kind of a banging summer for us. And then I, I'll leave the floor to you guys to ask questions about the different reports that I have in here.
I didn't have any questions over your quarterly report, anyway.
Okay.
Does anybody else have questions on the quarterly report or that want discussion? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that, and then we'll move on to the ambulance fees.
So move.
Second.
Okay, let me, I've got.
Hang on a second, we need to vote.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Okay. I didn't get all the information I needed for this last document before that was time to get so what this is, this is kind of a survey. Dan, I'm sorry, I do not hear that.
Dan, we gotta.
Let me take a picture of it.
That, that's, that's fine, Steve.
Sherry's, Sherry's gonna just text you a picture of it if you want it, but otherwise Gary can email it over.
So.
For later.
So on this document, I think it explains it, you know, let me back up just a second. Does anybody have questions about the blue document other than my recommended increases? Do you understand, I think I provide this quite often, but at least every couple of years. What this is, is, you know, there's what we charge and then what Medicare, Medicaid.
What we charge and what they actually pay.
What they, yeah, what they actually pay. I wanna provide that as well. So moving on to the, the purple page or lavender or whatever color that is. I have my recommended, we have our, in yellow is our current fees. The red is my proposal. Then I got some information from Vermillion, and this is what they currently charge. There's, then I got a bunch of information from QMC in the South Dakota ALS service. I'm ninety-five percent sure is, is Mitchell. Okay. The chief in Mitchell was on vacation and I can't get it from him. He's kind of being, I don't know why he can't break free from vacation and send me a little document, but. And then the QMC comparison report and summary for Midwest region. Is listed there as well. Increase that I put in there, it was just a starting point of five percent, so.
Five percent?
That's what I did, yeah. Speaking to QMC today, the only thing that they recommend is to do is something with fuel prices.
Like a surcharge of some sort or just?
Just addressing the fuel prices at some point.
Okay.
You know, whether it's increasing the mileage a little bit or overall base rate, something.
Yeah, that mileage rate probably could be reviewed.
What's that?
That mileage rate could probably be reviewed to reflect five dollar diesel fuel or five twenty diesel fuel.
Yeah. This year, we're pretty lucky. We got some locked in rates. But next year will be the, will be the makeup year.
Are you looking for approval of the proposals tonight?
Yes, or you guys can change the, change it, do whatever you are wishing to do. Or I guess you can table it, cook on it, and come back next.
So for those listening, and Wand, I don't know if you've gone through this before, you might. But some of the, the page that he, that Steve referred to in the packet, we could charge a million dollars a ride, and some of these places are gonna pay us what they pay us, no ifs, ands, or buts. There are some of the insurance companies that pay a percentage of what's charged. So our actual rate does, does mean something. But a vast majority of it, we just get what we get.
And, and one other point to bring out is private pay. It will increase the amount of money owed by, you know, uninsured people. So we just had about, we've had quite a few, I wanna say about a ten percent, maybe six percent increase on our private pay over the last two months. And we were on, in a meeting today, and we both recognized that with QMC, they both recognized that. And we're trying to figure out why. And it could be deductibles, no, insurance has already paid. Now it's falling into deductibles, or we're just picking up a number of people that don't have insurance, so.
Steve, we seem to be a little above the average on every category, but maybe one. And that looks like we're almost double or two point three times higher, and that's the specialty care transport. If I'm reading this right.
Yes, yes, we don't, I just, we don't do specialty care transports. We just don't ever get a chance to bill for those. But especially care.
And they're what?
Specialty care transport basically means is that the care that needs to be delivered. The care that needs to be delivered to. A patient. From in on an inter facility transfer goes above and beyond the paramedic level. Skill, and we need to have a nurse or respiratory therapist with us. But that doesn't happen. They usually fly those. Every once in a blue moon during the winter time or something, they can't fly, we might have something. So sometimes um it's not required, but. We'll ask the hospital for some help and they'll throw in a nurse or.
Sure, and then uh the ten or fifteen percent. Higher than the average on the other categories.
Don, do you mean higher than what uh reimbursement rate is from the insurance? Or maybe you have a different sheet than I do.
What I, what I'm asking is why the. Yankton County E M S proposed is about ten or fifteen percent higher than the Q M C. Average. Not high, not low, but average.
Well, that's just, I. I just do five percent of it.
So.
Before, it was before I got the, before I got the stuff from Q M C.
So that bottom line from Q M C is, is that one service or is that a true average of ten or twenty services?
Yes.
So it's one service.
Yes, it is.
So it's not a.
You're talking about the Q M C rate comparison?
Yes.
That is. Of comparison of all the Midwest. Services that they've done.
Okay.
All of their customers.
Greater in the Midwest where we, you know. They provided a map that goes clear east into Iowa or stuff like that.
Okay.
So if you, if you compare to that average. We are. Right in there and except for the specialty care. Transport now, there was, there was something on the radio, the Sioux Falls is looking for their. Uh cost to go to fifteen hundred. For A L S. Emergency. And they were gonna, they had a second reading in August sometime. Their proposal to go fifteen hundred. It was a hu- it was a big increase. So.
Yeah, I think they, I think that that service is asking for an eight point six. But she also has to remember they're private, so. They always charge more.
I would expect to see the average. If we reviewed it a year from now is. Probably gonna be higher than what it is on this polling, I would guess. You know, everybody's struggling with um keeping people hired and and hiring people to fill positions and. You know, our employees are gonna have a. Where we end up. We're gonna get the two percent plus uh another five, so a seven percent increase. To salaries next year. Imagine insurance will be up in double digits and so. I think, yeah, this, I think to. I'm okay staying ahead of the average. Any more discussion on the fee? Proposal?
I did. I guess my question has still not been answered.
Oh.
It's why is it higher? Why are we that much higher?
It was just, it was uh. It was just a how much it costs, or not how much it costs, but what the rate was set. Way back when, and it just kind of grew itself um over time.
I remember I did, we give it a healthy increase two years ago.
Yes.
We did.
And I think the reasoning or what we discuss is it. The majority of this is said anyway. Um, but it didn't hurt to try to put in what. What we felt we need to be reimbursed for.
Have no further questions.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion uh to either prove it or make changes or or discuss more.
I'd move to approve the proposed changes. Second.
Motion in a second to approve uh the proposed changes in front of us. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Dan, did you ever get that copy come through?
Yeah, I, I'm on my phone and I'm not able to read it, so I just won't vote on this one.
Okay, ups. Okay, uh that should do it for you, Steve.
Okay, hey, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Yep, Jen, you are next. Nurses' Quarterly Report, item nine.
Format for report, but.
I like it. It's nice.
Little meter. Easier to read. So I guess other than, you know, kind of the changes in the office, there's not been a whole lot. Does anybody have any questions on the report or?
No, appreciate it.
No, I really do like the new format. It's really easy to see it at Lance and Trends and things like that, so thank you for that.
I'm always surprised that the the money spent in the county for. The Wick Foods, so that was a good addition to that report.
And baby formula.
That's been a big issue since February, so. Didn't think it would last this long, but.
No, yeah, it's still. Basically the same size of an issue as it was then.
They do have that plant that closed for the second time for due to flooding, that's open now, so they're.
Okay.
Trying to get back on track. No estimated time when this might be resolved.
Any other questions for Jen? Now they entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Report.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, Markort Rezone, second reading.
Yes, this is second reading to requesting to rezone a rural transitional district. Commercial district per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine and Article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said property is legally described as the south one hundred and sixteen feet. Of Lot One in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Lot Two in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Lot and Lot Three in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter. All located in section twenty-four, township ninety-four north. Of range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian. According to the duly recorded plat there of the Office of the Yankton County Registered Deeds. Filed for. Record April twenty-fifth nineteen seventy-nine and recorded in book S eight on page one forty-four. Subject to easements, restrictions, covenants and reservations of record in Lot One. Except the south one hundred and sixteen feet thereof located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Section twenty-four township ninety-four north of range fifty-six west. Of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one address is three oh six three seven U S Highway eighty-one, Yankton, South Dakota.
This time I'd open up for public comment, would anybody in the audience care to make a comment on this rezone? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. We'll address.
Move approval of the rezone second reading.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion in a second. Further discussion.
We didn't walk through the findings at the last meeting.
Yeah, I agree. So. We've got a proposed rezone uh find the findings from planning commission and their recommendations. All documents. Uh for the application were completed, the properties in a commercial. Area along U S Highway eighty-one, making the rezone more appropriate with the surrounding properties. Conditions and circumstances are not the result of the applicant. Will not confer any special privilege. Notices were given June third and June tenth. Uh hearing was held. Uh June fourteen. June fourteenth um with Dave Husby appearing. It's felt the change is justified. And it'll make possible reasonable use of the land. It's in general harmony with the intent of the ordinance. Will not be injurious to the neighborhood or public welfare. The situation is unique and required to make reasonable change. Reasonable the change in zone. It is in harmony with comprehensive plan. Any development will comply with commercial zoning district regulations. Certification will be met as property is developed. Ingress egress exists off way, off right of way parking exists, refuges available, utilities are present, no screening or buffering required. Uh no, any new signs would follow the ordinance regulations. Required yards are present. It's in general compatibility with adjacent properties and the motion passed six zero. With that, any more discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote please, Patty.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Item eleven Mormon plot.
We have two plats tonight. The first one's Platte Mormons Edition in the west half of the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven township ninety-four five north. Range fifty-five west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval of the plat.
I needed to, we've got a motion to approve.
I have a question. This is six point. Zero three acres.
Three five acres, yes.
What are they, do you know what they're gonna do with it?
Basically, the one brother of the owner is is buying that piece.
It's a farmstead site.
There's a motion to approve on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, okay, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And the list flat.
Platte of Lot Eight and Lot B of Cody's Edition in the north half of the. Southeast quarter and the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-two township ninety-five north range fifty-six west. Of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval. Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Gary. Item twelve flames.
I just want to make a note that the Blue Peak. Used to be vast. If anybody, that's a new name. I had to. I had to ask, so. What was, what is it now? Blue Peak. Oh, so there was every, almost every department seems to have a claim for that, so I figured it was something normal. But I had to ask, so if anyone was curious.
I have a question, but I gotta get to it here. It was on it. The combined report. That something about alcohol. Fun. What that is, Patty?
Alcohol fun?
Yeah. Alcoholic beverage and. Non-expense. One oh one dash four dash thirty-two two hundred. Annual budget fourteen thousand dollars, there's eleven thousand left. What it's, what's that for?
What, what page are you on, Don?
I think it's on page thirty-four.
It's the very top.
At the very top, yeah.
It was a hundred.
It's in the.
I don't want to miss out on anything.
So I wondered, because the claims, it's a hundred and fifty. Yeah.
No wonder.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's what it is, because that would align with. Yeah, it's the very first page, South Dakota Department of Revenue Fees, Alcoholic Beverage. So they have to be remitted. We have to give up half the dough. Right?
Got you.
So.
Thank you.
I move approval of the claims, second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll look it up when you guys do your next second.
I think we got it.
I'm pretty sure, so we collect three numbers.
Yes, yes, yep. Who was so clean?
Uh, Lost and Fox. Great Auditor, Treasurer, Report and Pool Cash Report.
Move approval, second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mental Illness Quarterly Report.
Move approval, punish.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We've got the sheriff quarterly report in here.
It's bouncing back. Is he coming?
He used.
I was gonna ask Karen what, I'm assuming not, because it wasn't, usually it's in its own.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's with my stuff, so he couldn't make it.
Well, the only comment I have is. It seems that. And maybe I'm just reading this wrong. That he. Has more expenses on income on a couple of these. And maybe it's just that he hasn't. Or somebody hasn't worded total expenses, equipment balance, two thousand. What am I missing?
Which page are you on or where?
I can't tell what page I'm on. Five, for example.
Oh, that's for the twenty-four seven program?
Well, it's something, yeah. So. That's just a running total. Equipment and then seven thousand dollars in expenses.
Right.
Would appear to be a negative balance to me. See what I'm saying?
Yes, but I don't think the.
You don't think that's what it means?
I think both of.
There. There.
There, the total expenses is seven thousand one hundred eight dollars and five cents. Coming off of the very top was nine thousand seven forty-seven. I think is.
Oh, I see how he's doing it.
Yep, yep, yep.
The, there's a twenty-four seven fund, if you look at the pooled cash report. There's sixty thousand dollars in there right now.
It's just a. Odd format, I guess.
Yeah, I see what you're looking at, Wanda, but yeah.
Everyone's spreadsheet means something different to them. I know that.
That'd entertain a motion.
In which case, I guess I'd move to approve it, the sheriff's quarterly report.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, approved July fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
I'd move to approve the July fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, joint powers agreement for ju- juvenile detention services.
So is this the same agreement we've had for years and years?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer, but it looks to me like Sioux Falls is taking pretty good care of themselves.
Well, they've got the facility, so. Who's, who from Yankton County is on the advisory board, is that Rob? In here, they said every county has someone on the advisory board.
Yeah.
And then I had a thing of when, when is, some about when is that reported? Shoot, I should put the page number down.
Amy?
Can, can you give us a general? Discussion on the process of how they arrive, what we get billed on a daily basis?
How much or why?
Both. How do we get to that two fifty-seven or whatever is a day?
That's what they bill.
It's in here somehow. Five, five-year average.
They really.
We only have one person there or not, no people there.
They'll send us a, at the beginning of the, sometime, I don't know what their calendar years, but they send us a new billing amount.
Yeah.
For the, for the year.
I think the allocation you're talking about, Don, has to do with capital improvements to the facility. That that's their proposal, if they want to expand the facility, that the county who uses it more pays more. But it didn't sound like we're committed to anything on this. If they do decide to lay out fifty million dollars, it's not like we're forced to be on the hook for a million of it. Am I reading that right, yeah? So the advisory board shall consist of one rep from each party. Appointment to the advisory board shall be made by the Board of County Commissioners of each party. And for a term of two years or until otherwise replaced by the representative party. I don't ever remember appointing someone to the board, so we probably should figure out who it is.
I'm sure it's been the same person for.
Ever.
Ever, but we should look into that.
Yeah, I. It, it's probably the best and most economical reasonable way to do it with the low numbers that we have, so I'm, I'm just.
Still doesn't feel good.
I wanna understand.
I need a motion to approve.
Please.
Move to approve the joint powers agreement for juvenile detention services.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dan, are you still there?
Yeah, I, I voted aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, with that, we've got item fifteen. Don't wanna harp on this too long.
Is this in, in anticipation of the new project out by the lake for man caves?
Yep, so this was kind of a. Stemmed out of a meeting, Sherry, myself, Gary, Jessica, Brian Hunoff and Rob sat down and Bill. Just to discuss where the ordinance sits today, what's allowed. If that particular project can move forward and then in general, how do we handle this, do we need an ordinance change, et cetera? And so, to start with, I, I asked the state's attorney's office to just kind of verify and they weighed in at the meeting, but. The question was, can, can, as our ordinance sits today, can? We take a condo, apartment duplex, whatever, can we? Create a smaller lot than what the ordinance says because it's part of that duplex project as it sits today? And.
Microphone.
So.
Under the current ordinance, no.
Right, and so that's, that was the kind of outcome of that. There was a further discussion and meeting and I think. You know, under the current ordinance. We cannot plat off those smaller lots, so we would require an ordinance change, the other side of it is. There's a path through our current ordinance. Under, as just a leased property. Which is fairly typical, there's state law addressing that. So it's a, it's a viable path as it sits, the, you know, question is. What do we wanna do from here?
Essentially, there's a whole section in codified law forty-three dash fifteen A that talks about condominiums. And the question was raised, is a condominium a living space? And if you look up the definition, which is under forty-three fifteen A dash two, it includes businesses. So it, what they're doing out there, they, under the condominium statutes. They have a master plat that's owned by a so, an association, they can sell every one of those units. They just can't sell the land and plat it off, so it's just like a condominium and state law allows businesses to do that. So they have an avenue to proceed.
So are we gonna require them to have businesses there?
No, what she's saying is adds the, it, it applies to the commercial property as well as residential, is essentially what that.
But they're gonna have to have a septic system that's approved, correct? Since they're gonna have toilets and showers.
If they do put those in, yes, that would have to be an approved septic plan.
Well, won't that have to go in first before they start their concrete? In theory.
You would think so, and the way I understood it is they wanna pre-sell these and then.
They're gonna build one unit maybe this year and then next year where after build another unit, just depends on how many.
I understand that, but they're gonna have to, under the first set of units, they're gonna have to have a septic system because it's gonna be pretty tough to go back in later.
Right.
After they build it, right, oh, let's put in septic.
Right.
If, if they are businesses and if they are a man cave. There will be. Use of a toilet.
I would imagine there is, yes.
Mister Chairman, may I have the floor? This is Commissioner Plumashere and I, I get everybody, where everybody's coming from. But there is also a precedence in Yankton County. And if you look at the condos that we've approved and also a number of townhomes. We didn't put that requirement on at that time, so there's clearly a precedent set. In Yankton County, and I think we need to remember is that. There is, it's not like somebody's gonna be knocking down the structure and building something else. It's not like somebody's gonna be building a structure outside of this main structure. I, I think we need to look at it, you know, from an economic growth and development standpoint, why, yes, this is different. But I think we can make it work and we've done that in the past with the condos and the townhomes, not that far from this particular spot.
What requirement are you referring to, Dan?
So, the condos that we approved with the conditional use permit that Yankton County approved, right next to those. There was no, there is a shared lot and that was fine. And there's also townhomes with shared lots out in Riverside Acres.
I think that's the general consensus is it is.
Sure. Okay, so we're gonna, and we're gonna do that through the conditional use permit process.
What, what the difference is, Dan, is it, it's, it's allowed to sell the units.
Okay.
Be, those units typically under the state statute with condominiums are not platted off separately. There's a.
Townhouse, townhouses are.
No.
No, they're not.
Yeah. It's, look at, there's one down in Riverside Acres, not very far from this that is brought out.
So when you.
And I don't wanna do, and I, I believe I still have the floor. And, and when you look at that, there is a shared wall and I'm just, I'm, all I'm saying is, we can look for excuses not to pass this and delay it. That's fine, but I'm just asking you guys to keep an, keep an open mind and then now I will yield the floor.
So, I'm gonna jump in there and the condominiums you're referring to, when you look at Beacon, those are tax lots. It is not the plat. If you look at that condominium, it has one master plat. And the units are sold, the homeowners association owns the property underneath those units. So they have followed statute forty-three dash fifteen A and they followed the size of a lot with the plat. And then they sold those individual units off. And the other thing is we've already approved the CUP for this project. Now we're just trying to give them the avenue with which they can do what they want.
And, and I'd like to just bring it back, I know, I know this recent project is what spawned this. The question remains, i- if we ignore this particular project. Do we want to add verbiage into our ordinance that would allow smaller plats to be platted off and sold? Or do we feel the ordinance is sufficient as it sits, that's the question of the hour.
Mister Chairman, may I have the floor again?
Just a one second.
Do.
And. In that meeting, the, there was some proposed verbiage that came about. I'll read it quickly, this is not approved by any means, this would have to go through planning and zoning. But it just defines a shared wall building, a building that contains two or more units that share common walls known as party walls. Exterior of the building must meet all ordinance requirements. Minimum lot size setbacks, et cetera, the building may be divided and platted into smaller units that do not meet minimum lot area requirements. As long as the original structure maintains all required yards and setbacks.
So, my question is, are we gonna add this to the ordinance? Do we have to have a reading, do we have to have it put in the paper? Because I make a motion to approve this language.
No, we've got a whole amendment process, I think, I think what Joe's trying to get at is we need to decide, do we need to change the ordinance? And if so, how are we going to do it, so starting with the definition there, and then we have to go through and look at. And I went through residential one, two and three, and wherever the term multifamily is or two-family, which is in several spots in our ordinance. We need to figure out how to allow a duplex to be built and the lot split. Does the lot start at one acre and then you split it to half? Or do you still have to meet one acre on each side, those conversations?
Yeah, but isn't that the conversation we had with K construction when they came in and wanted to put in eight units on four acres?
And they did a PUD.
I know.
Yeah.
But. This makes sense as far as that particular development is. It doesn't make sense if we're going to build little tiny houses and hook them all together.
Right, the, the only.
And, and I think that's my concern is that, I mean, I don't, I, hot tiny houses would be great, but. I don't think we want tiny house business, man cave, man cave, tiny house.
Where, where this down the road would be potentially used would be like a duplex if they wanna truly split that lot. Starting with an acre and you wanna split it into two halves and then as Sherry alluded to, the discussion needs to be had. Do we allow them to have two half acre lots or do we have to start with the two acre?
Mister Chairman, may, may I have the floor for a moment?
Go ahead.
You finish?
Yep.
You know, and, and I, I agree, you guys, you guys make sense. But I think as engineers, maybe you're reading a little too much into this is in the fact that this is the first one. That we've experienced this way. And we're still requiring a conditional use permit where the county can place conditions on it if we feel it's necessary. Now, if it gets to the point, we're seeing more of these. Then I would support at that time going through this process, but we might, we might never get another one, that's it.
And that's the question, do we go through this or not?
Yeah.
And.
Exactly.
Dan, I don't think it's two engineers reading into it too much.
Yeah, I didn't mean that as a negative, but what I'm saying is.
Dan.
Is I, I hate to, to change the zoning ordinance every single time we encounter something like this. Because that's, that's not good either, so I'll, I'll yield the floor.
And, and that's the question, every time one thing comes up, do we change it and do we add this verbiage? And the ordinance as it reads is black and white. And our state's attorney's office has had multiple people in the state's attorney's office weigh in on it and they say you cannot create that smaller plat.
So if you've got a twin home, you cannot split it down the middle.
You can sell them off as leased lots, that's allowed. If you truly wanna sell the dirt underneath it and create a new plat, as the ordinance reads today, it is not allowed. We wanna take the step to make that allowed.
I think a lot of times you have to look at unanticipated changes that. By doing this, you, you guys may be creating more problems than are being solved. And, and you have to look at pilot drives, there, these type of things have happened where. The lots have already been split and there's, again, there's a precedent set, it's been done. And go through the conditional use process where we can put controls on it, is it perfect, no. But the zoning ordinance changes we might institute isn't gonna be perfect either. So I guess I'm apprehensive about making this change, especially how long it's gonna take.
So can I? Clarify, I guess. You don't feel the change is warranted and that's fine, I questioned it myself if it's gonna be you, you know, utilized down the road. So you don't feel the change is warranted to make it allowable? But you feel these, this application should be able to do it based off of what, just ignore that ordinance?
That's as, as I feel as you see it, and again, Mister Chairman, you have a different opinion than I do, I respect your opinion. I see it differently.
Well, I think it's been established. Through discussion, through meetings with four different department heads and the state's attorney's office. That it, you cannot create that plat. As the ordinance reads, so we have two options. We leave the ordinance as. We leave the ordinance as it sits. And that particular project has to work within the ordinance or we move forward with a change. Those are the two options.
So what do we need to do tonight?
Well, if. Want to move forward with a change and we'll, we'll ask planning and zoning to. Start it. It'll have to go through planning and zoning and then sent to us and to readings and whatnot.
Well, I offered to make a motion and I was shut down, so I'll make another.
We can, can I, can I add something first before, before?
Just a minute, Dan. We cannot approve.
I know that, but I could make a motion to move forward.
Yes, and I don't even know if we need a motion, but yes, we can. That's the general consensus. Should we move forward or not?
Joe, since I. Since I didn't sit in at that meeting and only you and Sherry did. Could we get that same presentation uh that you received? From equalization and register deeds and state's attorney's office? Because I have, I have some questions that I'd like to ask. I mean, you and you and Sherry who are the ones who are against this. Ask, you know, you're the ones who got that meeting. I never got to ask any questions or sit in that presentation. So I guess I'd like to. An option to hear and allow them to ask questions before we move forward with a two to three month change. In the zoning ordinance with this.
I would say ask any question you want now. If you have, when there was no presentation, it was everyone opened the ordinance and read it and said. You can't create a smaller plat than what the ordinance says.
Couldn't Dan ask his questions at the planning commission if he has any?
That would be. Applicable.
So so what part of the zoning ordinance are are you saying? That you guys opened, ran and and.
Sorry, say.
Like, could you, could you quote me the section that you're going on?
I can't understand it.
Well, for instance, um. Let's just go to R. R one is a five acre minimum lot size. If you want to create a one thousand square foot plat because you sold off a. A condominium. That one thousand square foot plat does not meet the five acre minimum lot size for that zone. If you go to a R two. And you start with a one acre lot size and you want to split that into two one-half acre. Plats. It does not meet the one acre minimum lot size. If you were to go to an R three and it's a half acre lot requirement. And you build a condominium on that and you want to plat off twelve hundred square feet, for example. It would not meet the half acre minimum lot size.
But that's all according to interpretation. If you want to go to HAG, it needs to be twenty acres. But we just interpreted the ordinance this very night for two plats that are under twenty acres.
That's because five thirteen, number four, says the zoning administrator may allow a smaller minimum lot requirement. We're in established single family home exists.
And that's the first time, that is the first time that's ever happened was tonight on these two plots. Because that never happened for the last.
It's happened for the last.
We changed the ordinance last summer to make sure that was in there so we could plat off farmsteads. It was specifically done for this purpose.
What what I feel is happening is this, these are good examples for variances. And you two, you two, and this is your right, don't like variances. So instead of. Moving forward rather quickly, we're now taking three months and changing the ordinance. For one state, one sale. And and. So that's my issue is you guys are making this more difficult.
The state's attorney's office, the state's attorney's office has said, these do not meet the bar of a variance. Because every lot in the county would qualify for a variance if they wanted to. There is no specific reason to give it. It does not meet the bar.
I also talked with the city regarding that and they said there, this does not meet a variance requirement, no ifs, ands, or buts.
Mister, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Your comment.
Yep.
Uh, I think as a county commission, uh, we hire people. To interpret issues like this, our state's attorney. Our planning, the zoning and. Register deeds and we put trust in what they say and what they do. And and we go ahead and make decisions on what they say or do, not on what we interpret or what we individually want. Agreed. I. I I think Joe and Sherry, uh. Uh, all of us meet with different departments in in the county. All of us have conversations with them. Everybody can be at every meeting. This is the way it works. And so I suggest that we move on.
I second that motion.
Okay, so. Do we want to task planning and zoning with this?
Yes, I I I do. And I I think there's some good ordinance out. Brown County has, has a way they approach. Two-family and larger homes with the different sizes of lots, et cetera. So I think there's some good reference points. I don't think it's gonna be a one meeting and done. I just, I just don't. If we're gonna do it right, we need to look at every zone. At where we have duplexes allowed, where we have multifamily allowed, et cetera. And and figure out how many places it needs to be. It's, it's not just gonna be a definition. Because you can have a definition, but you've got to have someplace in the ordinance that says, if you have this, you get an exemption to the lot size. That's what we need is an exemption to the lot size and an exemption to. The lot line setback when you draw that plat down the center of a house.
Agreed.
So how to simply put that into the ordinance so we can have people build duplexes and then have two plats for them. So that, I don't think it's gonna be overly complicated, but. If we can approach it with simplicity.
Right, I'm 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 gonna suggest just another comment on the subject. We wait, the way our world is going and our our nation's going. Change is inevitable and it's gonna happen more rapidly than it has in the past. I don't think we can sit and think we'll adjust our ordinances. Right, but once every five years, when we see something come up, it needs to be changed. We need to change it.
Well, and I think to Dan's point is, we're not here to impede growth and economic development. If our ordinance stands in the way, then we should adjust.
Absolutely right.
Gary, you have enough information to move forward? Okay. Just have, maybe at next month's meeting, share this definition and some discussion so people know what's going on. Okay, thank you. Okay, item fifteen is closed.
Glad, glad we weren't gonna beat that to death. Public comment.
On the item sixteen, public comment. Would anybody care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment. It's closed. Commissioner updates.
I I attended, I attended an R tech meeting. They're working really hard to keep that organization going and 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 uh looking at many different kinds of training that they can put on and. I, they're they're financially, have kind of turned the corner, I think.
Good.
They're looking, looking better. I, I think they're doing a great job. Trying to address community needs and and uh. They're like. What do you call a truck driver license? CDLs. It seems like it'd be simple to set one of those up, but there's so many snags along the way. To get that training through that they're working with other. Organizations uh to use their inspectors, use their testing people and us holding the classes, trying to get people in and. You know, they have, they have problems with people signing, signing up and getting ten people to sign up and. The week classes start, five of them don't show. But uh I think they're moving in the great direction.
Good to hear. Thank you.
So an update on the rural access infrastructure. They did come out with our county's allotment. We're getting about twice as much as we were anticipated to get. So for twenty twenty-three. We will be allocated two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or so, and it should be received by August first. Um, for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, it's about two hundred and nine thousand dollars for each of those years. Um, I did inquire with both South Dakota Associations of Towns and Township and South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. For where the application paperwork is because they want to have one form that all sixty-six counties use. Instead of us creating our own process, because the deadline to apply for these funds is October thirty-first. And so they're trying to crunch the paperwork to get it to us. So that we can present it to the township so they understand the process. And I told them, I says, you know, October, September is kind of harvest season and most of our township folks are farmers, so. It makes it tough for us to get information out too late. So hopefully that'll come sooner than later. The award for that first round of funding has to happen by January fifteenth. Um, I did sit through a couple of um. Federal Highway Administration webinars on the bipartisan infrastructure law. Which is all the bridge funding. Um, the one today was specifically around bridge. Bundling and how to bundle projects. Um, their first round defending for that is due, uh, the application is September eighth. I don't believe we qualify because we don't have preliminary engineering grants done. For the two bridges I would like to bundle and that's Old Fifty and Johnson. Um, hence why Mike was asking to do the preliminary engineering grant. So we have that for next year's deadline. Um, I I think that if we could get. Two of those bridges done with eighty percent help from the feds. Uh, that would be a big win for our our county, but it's all very preliminary. Um, a lot of stuff has to happen and the stars have to align on that. So just an update on some highway stuff.
Thank you. I don't have any updates. Wanda, did you have anything? Dan, do you have any updates?
Yeah, sure. The honor, the pact act legislation is um. Was passed by both the the House and the Senate. Now it's being held up temporarily, but in all likelihood, it's 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 gonna pass. And that has a significant impact on a lot of veterans and particularly veterans in our community. It is about toxic exposure. So there's a potential that we would have many more veterans. Um, throughout South, South Dakota, the nation and in Yankton County who would then be eligible for veterans benefits. So it's something we need to keep an eye on. That's all.
Dan, do you have a information you want to share on that uh naming of the next bridge in Yankton County?
Yeah, that'll be named after uh Sta- Staff Sergeant Daniel Chuka. And I believe it's gonna be on August sixth and I believe it's gonna be held. Uh, at the school. But uh, yeah, at the school, August sixth, and I believe it's at one o'clock P M.
It's, yep, the Yankton High.
Don't, but don't quote me on that, yes. And for those of you who don't know, uh, Staff Sergeant Chuka, he was from Yankton. And the bridge that he will be dedicated uh is the Highway forty-six bridge. Which is uh right next to, I believe, his grandfather, uh, former grandfather's uh property. So it's a pretty appropriate. It's within Yankton County on Highway forty-six.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Okay, that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for power relief. Issues pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight thirteen one point three.
So moved.
And uh, executive session for personnel issue pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law one twenty-five dash two. Subparagraph one.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you want me to call you, Dan?
Yes, please.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would move to go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion in a second to come back into regular session. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you opposed, motion passes. Did you get the motion? Wanted that done?
I'll move to deny. Uh, case file C W twenty dash one dash zero zero one. And C W M I twenty-two dash two dash zero one zero. The South Dakota Codified Law twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point one. Twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash three. In the amount of seven thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And no action will be taken as a result of uh personnel issue. Items for next meeting. Short and sweet. Oh, yep.
Yep, so if you.
M O U. Oh, oh, and do we want the M O U for next meeting or no? Okay. Alright.
Okay.
And obtain a motion to adjourn?
I'd move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now adjourned.